We'll go ahead and get started with the Wilmer City Council work session. I did not see anybody that had signed up for the public comment period. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting? Seeing none, we'll go to the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota update.
Hi. Hey, how are you today?
Great, how are you?
Good. My name's Doug Gassick and I'm the Executive Director of the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota. And this is Serena Otapi, who's our Main Street Coordinator. And I'm here today to give you a quick update on what's happening at Historic 313. But first, I thought it'd be worthwhile to give you a little bit of information about the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota since you all probably don't know who we are. So, we've been around for about forty years doing statewide advocacy work throughout Minnesota. And we really focus on doing policy advocacy at the state level. And we do the Minnesota Main Street Program or the coordinating program, which focuses on economic development in commercial areas throughout the state. And we also do a real estate program where we're a state tax credit investor in historic preservation projects. And in addition to that, why we're here today is because we started, a couple of years ago, we decided to expand that real estate program and start trying to acquire acquiring some property by investing in historic buildings throughout Minnesota. And Historic 313 was the first one that we decided to do that sort of investment in. So, I wanted to tell you what's currently happening at Historic 313. And in about March of this year, we decided to take on a more active management role in the building. So, we became the project managers and primary owners of it. And being an organization that's situated in the Twin Cities primarily, we thought it would be worthwhile to have a project manager that was a lot closer. And luckily for us, Serena works out of Granite Falls for the Preservation Alliance, so she's quite a bit closer than we are to Wilmer. So she does a lot more hands-on active management and is here probably weekly looking at the building, if not every other week. Since March, what we've also done is we've completed expanded business with Foxhole Brewery. They've expanded their main seating space as well as an expanded storage space in the back of the building. The Spurs Restaurant has continued to work on their building. And they're build out and they're getting closer and closer every day to completing it. We were just there earlier today and it's looking a lot more fantastic than what it was like two months ago. So they're getting closer and closer, which is really good. In this time too, we've also finished the wall, almost finished the walls in the common seating area space, which the walls are all up and painted, they just have some finishing work to be done. And we've also installed a new exterior door into the building, so that helps get some of the brewery equipment from the street to the storage space in the back of the building. And then, so what we need to get done still, what we're working on right now, is getting tables and chairs for the common space, which should be happening soon. We have to wait for some of the construction to get finished in there before we can get that in the space. And then to get the finishing touches on the walls. And then, we're also going to be looking for a third food tenant for the space too. So if you have ideas, let us know. But in that regard, we've been in really close communication with Aaron Bachman at the Candy O'High County EDC. And we've had a lot of conversations with potential client tenants about this space. And so, we're hoping to get closer and closer for that food tenant. So, we're here today because we really want to try and keep you as informed as possible. There's been a lag in communication. And I wanted to let you know where we're at and let you know that you can ask us any questions that you have. And just let us know how you want to stay informed in the future and we'll be more than happy to keep you apprised of all information or everything that's happening in the space.
Thank you very much for your update, really appreciate it. Serena, thank you for being here. And we'll be on our best behavior because we want to report back good to Granite Falls and Dave down there.
Yeah, definitely.
For those of you that don't know, Serena serves on the council in Granite Falls as well. So, council, any questions you have? Councilmember Elvaro.
Yeah, I was just wondering, do you need that third tenant to open up or can you open without it? Or?
We can open without it and we're ready to. As soon as Spurs finishes their build-out, they'll be open for business.
And tentative gestimate?
That would be really, really up to, hey, I'm not sure. We're trying to push her harder and harder to get it. We're...
Close to the goal this year, yeah? But we don't want to prompt, make any promises.
Yeah, and this year's coming.
Very, very close.
Okay, sounds good.
Looking a lot harder, peer in the windows there.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate your efforts.
Well, I just want to thank you again for driving out. Serena, thank you for coming up. I know that Ike and I had met with you a few weeks back. And I was really pleased at the progress that you had made there. And thank you for keeping us appraised. I think your main contact will be our city administrator, Mr. Holland, and correspond that way. The other thing that the council had done is set up a group that was going to meet on the future for our downtown area. And that is councilmember Fagerly, our HR director, Ms. Bridget, and Ike and myself. And so, we will be, there she is over there. So, we'll be getting some ideas and bringing those forward to the council as well. And Serena will keep you appraised of what's going on with that and how those conversations go. So, the goal was from the council to get that information back to the council quickly. And so, I would anticipate that we would have something on one of our work sessions. We've been a little busy with the hospital. So, that's taken a little bit of our time, but the council has directed us as a subcommittee, basically, to work on this. So, we'll certainly get that going as quickly as possible. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
We're excited for what's happening there. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Next, you have the Wilmer Community Assembly Event Report Presentation. Camille? Or whoever.
All right, well, clearly I'm not Camille, but I do want to thank Camille Morris-Stickleson. My name's Kyle Bezenko, I'm the Executive Director of the Jefferson Center. Camille is our program coordinator and I do need to thank her for coordinating. Thank you, Mayor and council for having us here tonight. Jefferson Center is a civic engagement and public policy organization. We're based out of the Twin Cities, but we have had the privilege of working with community partners, Hamlin University among them, but also here in Wilmer over the last year to conduct an event called the Wilmer Community Assembly. Some of you, we met in the process of organizing and developing that. Some of you participated in those sessions with community members. The idea behind the community assembly was to convene a cross-section or a microcosm of Wilmer community members to come together to learn about Wilmer's local government, to structure electoral processes and participatory practices, to hear examples from across the U.S. and globally about ways to, different ways to approach some of those structures. And then to identify what they felt was working well in Wilmer and identify ideas and recommendations for improvement. They met over the course of eight days on three weekends, spreading throughout the late summer into early fall. And I'm just really pleased to be able to have some of the participants come and share with you tonight a little bit about what they learned, a little bit about what they feel might be useful and beneficial for the council to consider, and just to share a little bit about their experience in having the opportunity to learn from one another and share their ideas with you today. So, with that, I just want to thank you again for your time and I invite our participants to come forward and talk a little bit about what they learned.
Perfect, thank you. And just so you know, that I get notes and it says who I'm supposed to call on, so I'm just going by that. So, I apologize for not having your names. So, go ahead.
Evening, everybody. I'm Ben Moss, I was one of the participants. And I'll start off with just a statement that's on page three of the report here. Wilmer Community Assembly brought together a group of smart, talented, dedicated people that opened our eyes to the diversity of this community. Residents of all ages, genders, ethnic backgrounds, and life experiences came together to discuss Wilmer's local government and offer ideas to strengthen our community. We discovered that strangers within this city have similar thoughts and concerns about the issues our community faces, but we're all invested in making Wilmer a better place. Our diversity helped us generate new, stronger ideas. We began by focusing on our common desires and as common ground opened up room for collaboration, we set aside political differences and worked together on complicated issues. Through this process, we were able to generate valuable input about and recommendations for our government. We discussed how our city government works, including the roles of elected officials and staff, voting processes, and ways for community members to be involved. The structure and processes by which our government operates impact the quality of the political outcomes we have to achieve. Our council members and board members make challenging decisions every day that affect our lives. Most of us, however, are often unaware of decisions being made at the local level. We gained a better understanding and appreciation for the difficulties government faces. And while our community is strong in places, we certainly have room for improvement, especially in ways for community members to be involved in government. We discussed the many different ways that other cities are making changes to get more citizens involved in its government and in decision-making processes, improve the diversity of elected officials, incorporate youth voices more effectively, and use processes like this one that bring community members together to share their perspectives and guide decision-making. Citizen involvement can make a big impact on outcomes. Our voices as citizens of Wilmer matter in every way, but we must first become informed in order to have the knowledge to make ourselves be heard. We're responsible for making good government. We need to come to the table, not just to wonder what we can do. At the end of the day, there are many ways to make Wilmer better. We don't need to wait for permission from the city council to pursue that. It was a great beginning. Citizen involvement is work that never ends and is our duty and privilege to do it. Then, I encourage all of you to go through the full report here. You'll see that we discussed a number of topics. We started out with narrowing down the process that the majority of the group was interested in, ended up discussing four very in-depth, and then ended up passing through two that we think the city could really benefit from. On page 12, the two that we decided the city would really help the most was better public meetings and digital public engagement. What we meant by better public meetings is a lot of times when we have meetings, when we think of public meetings for city council, we think of the setting just like we have right here, a town hall where people stand up in front of and talk at you guys and you guys talk back at us and can sometimes feel kind of adversarial or whatever. There are different ways to do public meetings. Some of them take facilitators, sometimes it's more interactive. And I think the group really found that that could really help on certain aspects of helping the city make decision-making processes, like where to put a parking garage or stuff. So, that's kind of one way that we thought that the community could be helped involve the citizens in the decision-making process and help the city council get better information from citizens, which is very important as well. The other thing that we felt would be helpful to the city was digital public engagement. And everybody wants to be digital and online, right? But there really are some tools that can be used to take that, and it kind of goes hand-in-hand with better public meetings, to take that decision-making process one step further to help you guys get better information and better feedback from the community and get the community to feel better feedback and buy-in to decision-making processes. So, I encourage you all to go through the report. And I think we've got at least one more speaker to go here.
Ben, thank you for your involvement and thank you for being there.
Yeah.
Would you mind if the council has any questions that you'd be able to answer at this point or do you want to get the floor first?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions for Ben at all?
In your digital public engagement?
Yep.
What kinds of things did you have in mind? I know there's apps out there that you can get where people can actually communicate back and forth.
Right. I think that the ones that we discussed the most in our period that people seemed to get the most excited about were ones that included either apps or just websites where people could go and kind of interactively make decisions. One of the examples that was presented to us that people seemed to find very interesting, the city, I believe here in Minnesota, no, anyways, the city was making decisions about a bridge. They had a website that presented different aspects of how the bridge could be designed or traffic flow or how the bridge could look. And people could kind of say, you know, okay, I like this, I don't like this. And there was also some information that gave them some trade-offs to say, you know, this would cost this much and this would cost this much. Do I really want to spend this to get this? So there was a lot of interactivity and helping you guys get more depth of information from the people rather than just I like or I dislike.
Ben, thanks and thank everybody who was part of that process.
Yep.
Just because not everybody sees this and echoing what you're talking about as far as information and communication out, can you address a couple of those that you didn't forward that are part of this report? I've read it, but just for the benefit of anybody watching.
Well, there was two in particular that we discussed in quite a bit of depth but didn't actually pass through, one of which was ranked choice voting. And the other one was changing the way that, that's on page six. The other one was just kind of in general, taking a look at how ward system works in the city of Wilmer and whether we would want to change that, whether it be going to completely at-large or maybe rearranging, having a mix of at-large and at-wards. But ultimately, the group felt that that was not beneficial at this time. Some of the other proposals that we talked about were youth engagement, the youth councils. There was, let's see here, that's on page two, some of the things that we looked at. Altered financial disclosure requirements, staggered versus non-staggered elections in government. So, there's a pretty wide range of topics that we had to talk about. And we spent nearly a full weekend kind of getting a feel for what each of those entail and then bringing those different proposals forward to the group. Does that answer your question?
Absolutely, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ben.
Yeah.
I'm interested in this better public meetings. I didn't quite catch what you're getting at. Are you talking about a better setting for the meeting?
Well, I think the example that I ended up having a touchstone for, for me, when I was at the group, I come from the city of Watertown in Minnesota, a little west of the Twin Cities. And we had a real problem with parking downtown. And the city says, we would like to put in a parking lot. City explodes. You know, we're a town of 4,200 people and people get really upset. You know, you're going to knock down buildings and do X, Y, and Z. So the city set up a meeting where they literally had tables set up and they had a map of the downtown area. And they had little pieces of paper you could move around to try and solve the parking problem. And out of that meeting, at the end of it, people came out and said, you know what? The city's proposal isn't such a bad idea. You know, so there was, that's just one example of how you can get some interactivity in the meetings to help people kind of make decisions and give feedback to you guys in not just a red versus green, yes versus no aspect.
So, the setting was quite a bit more comfortable?
Yes, it's more comfortable, more relaxed. It does take, oftentimes, there's a number of different formats to better meetings. Maybe not the greatest, you know, name for it, but oftentimes you'll see a facilitator, someone who is not necessarily one of the city council members or the mayor who's actually running the meeting and kind of making it more interactive. And it kind of depends on, there's different types of meetings to, for different events and different scenarios. So, there's a lot of information out there.
We used to have a system like that and this council has decided against that. It was, we had four committee meetings, met at city hall, around the conference table, very cordial.
Yep.
Non-invasive to anybody.
Yep.
We had public works, finance, community development, and...
Labor.
Labor, committee meetings. Where the public could come in and sit around a table. I thought that was a lot more comfortable also for constituents to come in and speak, but this council has opted against that. So, I mean, maybe we can talk about that again. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Did anybody else have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you and the rest of the people that are here representing the group for taking your time to participate in this project. I thought it was very interesting. In some of the reading materials you talked, there was a lot about building trust and communication, which we're talking about. Didn't it come up in your breakout sessions, in your discussions about, we used to have a thing called COPS meetings, where each ward had meetings where they got together and met with community members to talk about issues in their neighborhoods and in that ward or in the community?
I don't have a recollection of that specific example coming up during the meetings, but that's something that I think the group would have liked to have heard about too. I think that in general, the group definitely had a feeling that they wanted more ways to access the council and the decision-makers in general and the city leadership.
I was just wondering if anybody had brought that up?
Yeah, I'm not aware that that came up in the meetings.
Okay.
Thank you very much. You were, I remember right where you sat when I made my little presentation, so thank you, you're very well spoken. And we certainly look at, look to see how we can implement some of your ideas to make us a better community. So, I know someone's behind you to present, so.
All right, thanks a lot, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Urban and I was very fortunate to be chosen to be a part of the Wilmer Community Assembly, held earlier this fall. I'm going to give you just a brief overview of the process, a little different way than what Ben did, and the process we took to come up with the final report. And it sounds like all of you have had a chance to take a look at it, which is great. As I look back on my experience, the process we used to create the final report was actually quite brilliant. If you think about it, getting 35 people together, like Ben mentioned, from different backgrounds, ages, genders, political beliefs, getting everybody together to come on, to agree on some recommendations at the end of three weekends would be kind of a major challenge. And it's not impossible, really, but we did it. And it was really cool how we actually did it. Luckily, the assembly leaders, Camille and Kyle and everyone, were so knowledgeable and excellent, really excellent at moving us along with the process, because we, a big group like that needed that. We began, as Ben said, by learning about the government in Wilmer. We then studied the two ways that community members can influence local government. The first one was the electoral process and how citizens can impact the quality of government by voting. And then the second one is, was the participatory process. And that's just getting involved in the community, as Ben talked about. At the end of eight work sessions over three weekends, we were charged with compiling this detailed report with what's working in Wilmer and what challenges are present for our city and any alternatives that might enhance the quality of our local government in Wilmer. We first had to learn a lot before we got to all, down to the basics of everything. And we were presented with eight guidelines for productive conversation. I mean, they taught us how to talk in a group and then we were informed about how to make small group discussions very productive. We learned about the eight qualities of good government, which kind of stepped the stage. And they are accountability, participation, equity, effectiveness and efficiency, transparency, strategic vision, consensus orientation, and trust. As a group, we chose four of those qualities to focus on, and we chose accountability, transparency, trust, and strategic vision. What we did is we systematically moved from large groups where we got educated to small groups where we got more detail, back into the large group where we kind of put it all together. And I mean, we literally had pieces of paper on the wall, our leaders did. And it was just really cool that we were able to come at the end. I was thinking, how are we ever going to do this? But it was large group to small group, back, and as much as reading off papers and putting them on the wall. So, Ben kind of gave you an overview of the things that we ended up talking about, but I just wanted to give you a feel for the process and I was really fortunate to be involved. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Certainly. Thank you for your report. Anybody from the council, councilmember Elvaro?
What do you think the conduit of the group was to pull them together or get them focused in one direction? What do you think caused that to happen?
Well, I think, you know, honestly, a lot of it were the leaders of the assembly, because we would go off in different directions and they would pull us back in. So we came up with things like if someone started talking and no one was listening, you start, you raised your hand, everyone quieted down. So, that was the way to get it physically going. The other way was, we just had a good group who wanted, who didn't want to get into the politics and didn't want to, you know, make it adversarial. So, we were lucky that way and everybody just gelled and it came together.
It sounds like you chose to cooperate. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Definitely, you're welcome.
Well, Elizabeth, I just want to thank you for, I had the privilege of being able to address your group at the conclusion. And I was so impressed with your group. And to the folks at Hamlin, thank you for choosing Wilmer. This is a big deal. I mean, a lot of people think, oh, you know, we have this outside group going to come up and look about how we can run our city better. Well, I want to learn how we can run our city better. I want us to be engaged and I want us to engage our population. And it's everybody, it's not just the select few. And what I really enjoyed about going to that is I looked around that room and I recognized a lot of faces, but there were a lot of faces I didn't recognize. And to me, that was very encouraging that we have people within our community that want to be engaged, we just haven't given them the tools. And Ben, I really liked what you talked about of having a citizen member run a meeting. It doesn't have to be a council member, it doesn't have to be the mayor. I mean, we can have, we get into these breakout sessions, we can have citizens run that. And I mean, we haven't had it that clearly delineated to us, but we have had other people come and say, you know, you guys need to work a little harder on your strategic plan. And so, we're getting there. So, councilmember Nelson wanted to make some comments.
I just, to follow up with that is, what next? I mean, what will, is your group going to stay connected? Or if we can come up with some community sessions that need to be held, is your group available to help with that process or with those? So I'm just curious if there are next steps that are planned or if your group talked about next steps.
We definitely did and we have plans to get together. Everybody who wanted to provide their information, email and telephone did. And as a result, there, you have a list to contact if you wanted to contact any of us to get involved. Any one of us could take up the charge, you know, and get a group together. But there've been small groups that got together. In fact, last night, it was Dale and Carmen and me and my husband, we got together. And so, we do have plans to stay in touch. The point, the thing that we have to do is stay in touch. So, that's the hard part. But we really were committed, we've committed to it, so I hope we can do it.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your dedication to do that, so thanks.
And I don't know if everybody knew, but there were only three cities chosen in Minnesota for this, Red Wing, Wilmer, and Brooklyn Park, up in the cities. So I thought that was pretty cool, out of the whole state, you know, to be one of three chosen.
Thank you very much, appreciate your report.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. My name is Christina Nelson and I was a participant in the Wilmer Community Assembly. And I was asked to just briefly give kind of an overall impression, just as a participant of the process and how I feel coming out of it. I walked in there vaguely knowing what I was walking into. I've been involved in more political things on the state or the federal level, but not so much local. And I'm fairly new to Wilmer, I've lived here about four years now. So I didn't really know much about the local government, I was excited to learn about it. And I did. I learned, there was plenty I didn't know. But I think what was more important throughout these eight sessions, for myself especially, and I believe for all, but I can't speak for everyone, of course, was that this whole session was very empowering for two big reasons. One, while I didn't know a whole lot about local government, I was surprised by people who had lived in Wilmer all their life and were at this assembly. who had lived in Wilmer all their life and were at this assembly, and some of them didn't know many things about local government either. And not having that knowledge leads to not having power. And personally, from, I believe with our democracy, the power it should be with the people, and getting that knowledge and realizing these steps we as citizens can take to create change in Wilmer is very empowering, and I believe it should be so, and I think we should be expanding that to as many people in Wilmer as we can, to get them informed on what they can do and be a part of the process, and to work with the mayor and with the council on pretty large decisions that happen that affect our daily lives. The other thing I found really empowering was the fact that we had such a perfect mix. It was a great, just demographic of people. You can see in the last page of the report, just the breakdown of how Wilmer's demographics work out, and how we were able to kind of form an almost perfect demographic. And I found myself in small groups with people that were very different from myself, both politically and just other ways, and we were able to engage in critical thinking with each other, come to agreement with each other, not always agreeing on everything, and that's okay, but all voices were heard, and it was proof that collaboration is possible. And we need to, I think as a city, and I'll just say it as a country, need to remember that collaboration is possible and it is indeed necessary. So that was my general impression of the assembly and why I thought it was so important, and we should, if we can, continue to kind of do these sorts of things throughout Wilmer. Thank you.
Anybody from the council that wishes to make any comments? Councilmember Elverano?
I just want to thank you for choosing Wilmer, your participation. When I was approached about it, I got very excited about the possibility of having it here. I didn't know what they were going to be addressing, so it's very exciting that they addressed this topic, because we want to improve as a city, and I like your enthusiasm. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that came out of the meeting at the conclusion was the civic engagement, and from the mayor's office, you heard it from me that day, you'll hear it again today, is that we need you, we need the public involved in our civic process. And so, as I stated at that meeting, the mayor's office will be open next fall, and if anybody's interested in running for mayor, I'm certainly willing to sit and visit with them about that, tell them what the responsibilities are, because I think too often we just hold our cards too close to the vest. I don't want competition. I want, you know, I've had this kingdom for a long time, and I don't want anybody else to have any part of it. Well, that's not, that's not good government. And so, again, I will thank you for coming here, and thank you for the work that you guys all put in. You guys have done great work. I was so impressed with what I seen. The takeaway from me that day as I walked away from the meeting was an individual that said, "I didn't realize I could pick up the phone and call the mayor." And talk about empowering. If your group could share that message through our community, you can pick up the phone and call anybody you choose to call in America. That's what we're all about. That's democracy. So again, thank you for your report, thank you for your good work, and I look forward to you guys being at the meetings. Remember, one of the things you were tasked with was attending council meetings as well, so I'm pleased to see all of you here, so keep up the good work. Councilmember Mesky?
Thanks to you for your welcome and openness.
Thank you.
Well, part of that strategic vision, of course, is not to put things on a shelf. We've received this, and although not a product directly of this council, it is a product directly of the citizens of the city, and these ideas, especially the two that have been cited as better public meetings and digital public engagement, I think we have an obligation to take these a step farther, without hearing any set professional stuff coming or organized stuff coming from the organization farther. I think we have an obligation to take these, not just as information, but to maybe take these and see if we can adopt some of those in the future, so it doesn't just sit on a shelf, because it would make, you know, pay homage to your dedication that we actually take it to heart and see if we can implement some, so thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the Hamlin group? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your report, and I don't think I cut any council members off yet tonight, so that's going to be my goal tonight, is to actually acknowledge everybody that raises their hands, so I think we do a fairly good job, but last meeting, we stumbled a little bit, so. Next, we have a finance department update. Am I supposed to call in Steve here or somebody else? Steve? We'll get one out of three, right?
Bear with me for a minute, Mr. Mayor, I got to open up a file here for you. And I'm the first one here to see if the, there we go.
Technology works?
Technical difficulties are the new thing here, so.
Safe travels back home.
It's not wanting to open up. Mr. Mayor, I will just go through the slides and touch on them rather than doing the actual slideshow, and I do apologize for that. But if I may take the liberty, I know that this format is somewhat shortened as far as being able to explain the city's finances, especially after the last presentation, and as Councilman Osmus had mentioned earlier, the police department had their neighborhood COPS meetings. We also used to go around to the wards and for budget presentations or questions and finances and stuff, just due to the time restraints that we have at this meeting and be able to answer any questions and explain the complexity that we have in city government. And we've kind of gotten away from that, and are more than open to, if citizens have questions, to call our office or the city offices, or maybe revisit, as kind of suggested, to going back to those types of meetings, to be able to explain the information to the citizens and anybody who may have questions with that. So thank you for that privilege to kind of deviate from my report. My report in your electronic version runs from page 22 through page 58. It includes the cash and investment portfolio, the general fund operating, which is the general operating fund of the city, which is kind of key into funds that aren't designated. That includes the revenues expenditures, our enterprise waste treatment, and then Rice Hospital. As customary, Rice Hospital and municipal utilities, which are city-owned, come usually after we present the report to you and give a detailed presentation or answer any questions, and we usually have that scheduled quarterly. I know that we have been kind of running short on time, so I'll try to, and again, this is not responding, so I apologize for that. Hopefully, it will work better for Mr. Peterson and Mr. Christensen. If you would, council, if you would go to page 20.
Can we get ahold of Dave Hallibrand and see if he can come over here and see if he can figure this out? Or get ahold of Ross? It did change the slide for me, but. Okay, thank you.
Again, I mentioned.
Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Hanson. And again, on page 23 of your electronic version is a listing of our investment activity for September and October. The reason you do not see a lot of activity there is that we do report the market value change quarterly, and you can notice from that slide that there was very little change in the third quarter, a slight reduction in the market value, and that has to do with the investment market being somewhat stable in the last quarter. Pages 24 and 25 list the investments. You'll see there on the maturity date, one of the objectives that we are trying to do is to fill the early part of our investment portfolio, that's defined as the next two to three years. When the finance department took over the portfolio at the end of last year, a lot of the investments were unloaded, because that was the market that was driving it. There were 10-year step-ups and those types of things, and so we're a little short on the 18 and 19 investments. Our plan is to review our cash flow projections for 2018, and based on the council's plans for capital improvements and financing, structure our outgoing investments in the next month and a half to fill in those gaps in the beginning of the portfolio. Again, this is the second page for the total value of 41.5 million. On page 26, you'll see that we do have, on top of the 41.5 million in investments, we do have 5.7 in cash liquid. We are dealing, if you'll notice the rate there, 0.23, we are dealing with another local lending institution to create and open up a money market at a somewhat substantial better rate than that, and we're in discussions with, it'll be a 0.9, and so we'll use that as a kind of a clearing account, and use that in and out as the cash flow determines. Moving on, onto your page 27, 10 months, it would normally be 83%. I'll only touch on a couple items here, just due to the time that we are limited to tonight, but again, I'm open at any time if council members or public have any additional questions to call my office or the city office, and we can go into more detail. The two items I'd like to point out on this slide is that the general property taxes and the intergovernmental, you'll notice, are at 52 and 54%. Those are the revenue, major revenue sources for the city, and those are, come in twice a year at the end of June and December, based on property tax payments and the payments from the state of Minnesota for local government aid. The other item I'd like to point out there, the second item, is license and permits, and that's due to building permit and building activity in the city. We are ahead of schedule of what we had budgeted for the amount of activity that is happening in the community. On page 28 of your electronic version, again, I would mention that at 10 months, you would think, you know, if you're right on, you'd be about 83%. Some of the items that will change are seasonal type expenditures as well. The two items I like to point out on here is the assessing department. This is due to the city contracting with Caney Lake County, and that billing has come in at slightly over. There were some items in there that put it slightly over the budget. The other item I'd like to point out there is office services. We are changing the way that we operate our office services. It was an internal kind of clearinghouse type account, where we would buy the supplies, inventory, as the departments used, that they would sign it out. It was kind of an internal clearinghouse. We were doing away with that to where we created a department in '17. We didn't quite have the history to know how much of office supplies we have. This will give us the information that we have moving forward in '18. So the departments will be somewhat under, because all of office supplies are being charged to office services, and so line items in the independent departments will be lower, and so the departments will be somewhat under budget for '17. On page 29, a couple items I'd like to point out there, transit. We have not received a request from the transit for their contribution, that's why that doesn't show as being expended at this point. Leisure services, the aquatic center in the community center are a leg in communications with the school. They reconcile their accounts, it's always a month or month and a half behind, and then they send their reconciliations to the city, and we record the activity that runs through the school in the joint purpose agreement. The aquatic center, you'll notice there, that's a seasonal item, that will come in under budget. That should be all the expenditures at this point, since we're through the season, and so even though it should, you know, we talked about 83%, that 90% is a seasonal item, and should cover the costs associated with that for 2017. The waste treatment plant is our enterprise fund. Again, it should be at about 83%. We coordinate and work with municipal utilities to handle our billings for the waste treatment account. So again, there is somewhat of a lag in the information when they give it to us. By the time they reconcile, we get the information 30 days after the end of the month. So this is actually for nine months. The average is about $600,000 and some $1,000,000 of revenue, and so the bottom line that you'll see there at the end of October really will be about $700,000 rather than a little over $40,000 through the first 10 months of the year. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd answered questions again. The utilities and the Rice Hospital will be invited at a meeting in December to go over reports.
Thanks for your report, Steve. Could you go back to that last slide that you had up there on the auditor? So on the wastewater treatment plant, the auditor had recommended that we had a certain amount in that fund, and had said that that number was considerably over what he had recommended. Do you remember what that number was? I should have called you earlier, I was going to today, and then I forgot, but.
The recommended amount is one year's debt service and six months of operating. I don't remember the exact dollar, but I certainly can supply that to you and the council.
Would you please?
Sure.
Thank you. Also, any questions for Mr. Opens? And then I have you listed that you're going to do the public works update as well.
I believe that's an error, Mr. Mayor. I certainly would be willing to do that, but Mr. Christensen may not like my presentation.
Okay. So you're doing it, Sean?
I'm doing it.
Okay. Yeah?
I'll get that out of there for you. Mayor, members of council, it's going to be a rather short, as there's not much public works going on at the moment.
Well, as you load that, I will tell you, that new truck sure looked good in the parade on Saturday.
Well, I got a couple pictures of those, too, if you want to see those, but.
You know, I said to Darren afterwards, I said, you know, it'd be nice if it had that art pile on the front of it, but he said, everything happened so fast, they couldn't make those adjustments, so.
I suppose we could have done that. I don't know what that picture, or how much of that would have shown up under the lights, but we could have done that. That was the purpose of that, Mayor, was that that was the new trucks, that had just been in less than a week, so, kind of show, you know, get some public outreach on those as well, so. Yeah, it turned out good, thank you. So as far as updates go, like I say, we've only got a couple projects going on currently, and that is, the two I've got, I'll update Sean, is Rice Park and the 16th and 17th Street construction. So these are some more, well, you can see the date on there, just a week ago for November 15th on this project. Now, as of today, the roof is on. Now, as of today, it was out there this morning, so that will be a change in this picture, and then also the ground has been steeded and drilled, and so, we're promised that the cleanup will begin, and it'll, at the end of next week, it'll look like a clean site. Building materials will be gone, and it'll be virtually complete, and then in the spring we'll come back and do the walk-through on, make sure all the water and features work and everything works well, as well as all the plumbing in the building. A couple of the pictures, again, these will be cleaned up, these are in progress, obviously, and as you can see by the guy standing on the roof, so apologize for that, but anyway, that'll be done as of, yeah, the next week. I think that's all I have on that particular project. Any questions on Rice Park?
On the Rice Park project, it was nice to see that pile of dirt get moved out, but then it also looked to me, when I drove by there last week, I didn't drive by there today, but it looked like the task force for hours. but it looked like the task force throughout was well.
Yes, task force are gone. That whole area's been seeded now.
Thank you.
So we'll have to do, potentially have to do some spot seeding since we're so late in the year and next spring when we get back in, but yeah, it cleaned up really well. Was out there at about 11 o'clock this morning, so it was good.
Looks like we're ready to move to 16th and 17th Street.
Okay, so the only projects left on 1701B are the 16th and 17th Street. They have their base course patuminous down. And so it's hard surface now and the gray color you can see in the pictures there on the, well, either on the pictures, it's actually the hydroseeding. And so with, we're anticipating a significant amount of grass coming back up in the spring. And again, we'll have to spot seed if we need to, if we get to the spring and it didn't, it didn't pop like we wanted to. But everything's been hydroseated, everything's been cleaned up. Except for the, you know, you're going to have that little limp of the crew because of the only one course of pavement down. We're going to have some, we've already seen a few problems of soft areas that have shown up and some holes created. We've fixed a couple of them already. But we anticipate as of any year, when you, when you go that deep with construction, that we'll have to cut some of those out in the spring and before it gets to final wear course on down. The stop signs are temporary at the moment, but I think we're scheduled to plant them permanently. And I think that is, yeah, I think that was, I just got a couple of pictures of that here last minute, so. Yeah, I can answer any questions on my project as well.
We've got hands all over the place, so we'll start with Councilmember Plowman.
Didn't cover it well.
Maybe some of them will overlap. Thanks, Sean, for the presentation. Just with regards to the paving, we know, I mean, anybody who drives past that area knows that kind of mint construction, especially when going that deep, when hit with moisture, like we were a few of those washed outs. That probably pushes the project back. Was it way past schedule? Or did they maintain their construction schedule that they had hoped?
No, believe it or not, they were within, they were less than a week from the original substantial completion deadline that we'd set for them, so. They hit it pretty well, even with the, even with the rain or their construction delays.
Okay, and then just to follow up one final. Do you think that going through, I mean, is going through a freeze thaw cycle a good thing when, when doing a full rebuild? You think that's advantageous for the next year when you go back? Gives you more to repair, more to address, whatever, before putting on that final coat?
You know, I think it is. And before coming here, I wouldn't have thought that until actually seeing it, seeing it in action. And over the winter, we'll mark some of these holes, these soft spots that we'll see and the pavement will actually break up. We'll let that kind of run its course and then in the spring, we'll come in and we'll cut out excessive or extra from what we, what we noticed and then pave that in. So the base course will look pretty patchwork. But then, but that saves the wear course by having that done ahead of time. Then we, then we don't see the, see the damages to the, to the final wear course.
So we have a new road now, but we'll have a new road next year too?
Right, and it's, it's a good point. What happens is, right now, it's only effectively half of the pavement strength. And so we still, that's why some of those spots show up. The other day, we had a truck go down there that shouldn't have been and, and, you know, so we, we had a hole develop and we sort of got that fixed, but. So that's, that's one of the concerns is by leaving it over the winter until it freezes, it's, you know, it's half strength on that pavement. And so regular car traffic, not a problem, but, but heavier traffic can, can see some issues with that.
Well, it's nice that vehicles can get to their homes and homeowners don't have to make that trek through the sloppy mud. But thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Christensen. I did receive a phone call, a concern from a citizen about why it couldn't be totally, completely done when they had to pay ahead of time to have it done and now they have to wait until next spring. Could you really clearly say what, why it's advantageous?
Well, if you wouldn't have said it really clearly.
Covered some of that with, with a member Plowman.
Right, and, and Finance Director Okens may be able to correct me, but I know some of the, I know a lot of the assessments are used for bond payments. Okay, that we had to pay for that, for those projects. And so I know that's part of it. The other thing is, regardless of when you start paying your assessments, you have 10 years. So you started this year, you have until 27 to pay it. If you start next year, you have until 28. So it doesn't necessarily matter when you start. You still have the 10 years to pay, still get a new street. Warranty period still applies. So yeah, whether you start at construction or at the end of construction, I'm not sure. It affects the, the, the street construction itself, so.
What's the specific reason why we, it wouldn't have the second layer?
Sure. What happens is, especially in Minnesota and the soils we have around Wilmer, when you dig for water sewer specifically, storm is not quite so deep. You're excavating about 10 feet deep. Okay, so anytime you bring that much soil and material out of the ground, you put a pipe in, you put the soil back in there, it's going to be, there is going to be some settling, some differential settling and things of that nature. So you couple that with the expansive soils that we have, the freeze thaw action we have in the, in the spring, the reason for the road restrictions, you know, that, that, it all ties together. So that soil moves so much that first year, we've seen a pretty good, pretty good response or pretty good success rate with letting that movement take place that first year, the first freeze thaw cycle, and then fixing whatever problems have exposed themselves and that cover those or fix those and then cover it up with new pavement so that it doesn't wreck the new pavement.
So it's cheaper because you don't have to fix two layers?
Well, it, it is, and it looks better. I really despise cutting into new streets and so I'll resist that every chance I get.
Okay.
Mr. Christensen, I think one of the questions, and let me maybe ask the question a little bit different than how you asked it. So the question was not, I think when the people are paying the bonds over the 10 years, they understand that. But how I heard your question is when they make the payment upfront, and I'm assuming you're talking the person made the whole payment, so they didn't have to pay any interest.
I, I think the voicemail went, why did I have to pay the whole thing? And my, and it's not all done.
Right. And I had, I had, I had a number of calls on that last year and the previous year I had one. But, so I think the question is, is they have to pay it upfront.
Sure.
And then the work isn't done. And so what was shared with me last year by a constituent was, if I'm going to pay it off and not have to pay the penalty, why do I have to pay it in the first year? Why can't I wait until the project is complete and then make the payment? So I don't know, that might be Mr. Okens' question. I don't know that answer, but...
Yeah, and I would defer to Mr. Okens if it has to do with financial, but you know, maybe there's a, maybe there's some interest savings if you don't, if you paid off earlier, you know, a year earlier. I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it can be prepaid at any time. It would be the first year's interest that would be beneficial to pay it upfront. But if they wanted to pay until next year, due to the, the assessments being certified to the county, 2018 would be on their property tax statement already, but they could prepay the remaining balance without interest.
If, if the question is why we assess upon beginning construction versus assess the following year after, after construction, I'm not sure I know the answer to that. I know some cities, cities do it both ways. And so I just know that past practice here anyway has been upon construction, we start the assessment process.
There might be something that, Mr. Holland, it might be something we want to put on a tickler for when we do assessments for next year and just kind of talk that process through. Councilmember Swantus, followed by Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm assuming several of us received the same phone call and so my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got same phone calls as Julie. And I tried to explain it to that person the same way you did. And then by paying it all upfront, they're saving the interest on 10 years, which I don't know what the amount is or what the interest payment is, but they understand that they're saving that amount of money. I got a call from the other people over there too that were dissatisfied during the course of the construction. And is everybody happy now on both streets?
You know, it's a little disappointing to hear of the dissatisfaction because I have heard nothing but positive remarks and reactions from, from the residents, residency engineer, the contractor, and I thought things were going very smoothly, very well because I didn't hear of the, of the negatives. So, you know, as negatives come in, we take care of them or we figure out what the issue is and take care of that, but. No, I thought it went, I thought it went rather smooth. I was on schedule and even with the rain and, and you know, it was a big project, big project. It was a, you know, it was have to, have to, you know, over half of our entire construction budget was on that particular project and it was a very large project.
One resident was unhappy because he couldn't get his motorhome into his driveway. And I told him that you should probably park it somewhere else during construction because it's not meant to go in and out every day with that. How about the, the one I relayed to you about the asphalt? Did that get taken care of too and he's, he's happy?
Yeah, and what had happened there was, that was an existing asphalt driveway. And so it, the reason it wasn't poured with the rest of them is because we were waiting for the asphalt to be on site. And so, yeah, it didn't get put in with the rest of the driveways because it was an existing asphalt driveway rather than concrete.
Good.
I'm sure he's... But yes, it's taken care of now.
Sure.
Good.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by El Dorado.
Thank you, Ming. The gentleman did a good job calling all of us, so generated, I think, different questions from different. When I drove through there, I noticed that the concrete in the driveways were different lengths. And I thought he had something in his message about, so was that just, is that an option? Or is it just what was torn out or?
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a couple of things there, Councilmember Nelson. So the, the standard practice gets us to take it to the right of way. But when you get to that point, you don't want to leave a one-foot strip of concrete, you know, that, that's got two joints, okay? So there are, in each, we go to each driveway and if there's broken up concrete, we might go a little further. If there's a joint just shy of the driveway and the rest of the concrete's good, or I'm sorry, of the right of way, we might cut it a little bit shorter. But we replace the apron we, we, we deal with. In this case, there's not sidewalks, so we didn't have to worry about slopes or anything like that. But the, the standard is, is right of way. Now, we might go a little bit shorter, a little bit longer, depending on where a current joint or a broken concrete is.
Okay, but the cost is the same. It's not like...
Yeah, the, the homeowners don't pay additional for that driveway unless they want to expand it to whatever a current maximum width is. Or if they want something different than what they had, then, then we have those conversations individually.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember El Dorado.
Yeah, I was one of the lucky members also to get a call. But I would like you to explain the process next year so they know what to expect going forward. And before that, like you alluded to briefly, our, our people on the ground working those projects, I heard nothing but good, good things about the contractor that was overstaying it, our people there that were overstaying it, very approachable, speak highly of you and our city, so I appreciate that.
Can I have a follow-up? Which process needs to be explained better? Because I, I try to explain it every year and if I need to change that, I can, I can sure do that.
What I'm talking about, now that you've got the first layer down, what's going to happen next year?
Sure.
You know, it doesn't have to be that day one we're doing this, day two we're doing that, just kind of an overview.
I can tell you that every, every property owner on that project got at least three newsletters over the course of the project, beginning and at least, I think, at least one in the middle and one at the end explaining the, the status to date and what was to be expected. So I will try to explain it better. But I think, I, I think the residents were fairly well informed.
What I, I think you missed, what I was asking is, can you just say what, next year when the construction project starts, what's going to happen? Specifically, I know you put down another layer of asphalt. Then you're going to tar it and put gratifying or something?
Nope, that's it.
That's it?
One more, one more left and then we're done.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. That's, that's what's going to happen next.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sean, I had one constituent that called me and they were concerned that they had paid for the widening of the driveway that you talked about, and then I think they also paid for a pad. And that wasn't done this year because, for whatever reason. And Curly was out, met with them and they were very pleased, similar to what Councilmember El Dorado said, very pleased with staff.
Yep.
But they were a little bit concerned with the contractor and not really clearly telling them what they were going to do come spring.
Sure.
And I think you probably know who I'm talking about or...
I'm, I'm not 100% sure, but I can, I can look into it or talk to you after and, and get the address. But, you know, if, if, you know, if we promised something and we didn't get around, or the contractor didn't get around to doing it this, this fall, then, you know, then I apologize for that if the weather got in the way or whatever the case may be.
Weather, what they were told.
But, you know, if, if it was promised to them, they'll, they'll, they'll have it.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything else for Sean? Thank you. These more detailed reports like this are really good. This is a good thing, so, thank you. Fire officer, or firefighter and fire officer Pace Gale, Chief Hanser.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do have a PowerPoint presentation. We're going old school paper tonight, so. Before you do, you have a proposal for firefighter wages increase and fire officer wage increase. Back in, I believe, March or April, this was sort of brought before you and then you requested a study comparing wages throughout the area. And that is enclosed in your packet. So I'm here to answer questions tonight and hopefully move forward with this process.
Okay, what the request is, is for a 10% increase and to tie the increase to the ASME Public Works Bargaining Unit for pay increases in the future. Councilmember Osmas.
Thank you. Is there a minimum call-out time? Let's say if they respond to a fire, do they get a minimum of two hours or is it just the one hour? Let's say if they, if it was a non-go.
They get a minimum of one hour.
Just one, okay.
And then, once you break that second hour, then it's a full second hour. They pay the full hour increments is what they're paying you.
Okay.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'm very supportive of doing the salary increase. In fact, I would be willing to offer a motion, but I am reluctant to do the second part with tying future increases to some, to the, what they're referring to with the ASME Public Works. Not quite sure where that one came from. I don't know that with that. And so I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of increasing it and I think that it probably needs to be reviewed sooner than it has been. But I'm not so sure about tying it to something that's a different type of, of position. And, and so I'd just like an explanation of why that was added and why we aren't just doing this salary increase this year.
Um, I, I think that the reason it was added is so they wouldn't get for, it wouldn't get pushed back like it did since 2007 this time. That way it doesn't have to be brought up every single year. They just follow the pay increase of, of the public works. And that way they keep up with the city employees as well as other fire departments without getting behind like it was last time.
Just a concern because we're volunteer fire, fire department. And I know we have some, have had some concerns over the years with maintaining the, the number of people and those types of things and how we compare to other departments and those. So I just see it as a, not a mess to tie it to a full-time or part-time employee when we're talking about volunteer fire department. And so, I, you know, other than us just not doing our due diligence and bringing it forward when we need to do another raise, I just am reluctant to make, more than supportive to do the increase. I'd just like to see it come back to do an increase that's representative of what we need to pay the volunteer firefighters.
I, I, I think the, the word volunteer is probably not correct. In, in my eyes, in, in my eyes, these guys are part-time employees for the city. They, they put in, you know, many hours a week, every week. And I just thought that this way we could keep ahead of, of not recognizing pay raises for them.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, our, our police, our law enforcement and our, our professional safety members around the city are, are held in really high regard. I mean, those are the core services that people in Wilmer expect to have. I'm fully supportive, just like Councilmember Nelson said, I'm fully supportive of the pay increases. And also to echo what she said, I, I am just a little bit hesitant in tying it or attributing it to a different barometer of sorts. And I think I understand your reasoning for wanting to do it that way. But I think, just in my humble opinion, that it should be the responsibility of those sitting around this desk to make sure, and, and yourself to bring it forward. and yourself to bring it forward, to make sure that if this needs to be done, then it gets brought to us and we make sure it gets done, uh, because it sends a loud and clear message to all of those professionals that, um, put in all those hours. And, and when we call in the middle of the night, if we need them, they're there. And so, like I said, um, aside from the hesitation in, in, uh, tying it to another organization barometer, uh, for increase, um, I do support these raises, and I would support taking an annual review of these numbers a- as a body.
And, and we certainly can do that. We can, we can take that part away, and I can make sure that that comes to the council yearly.
I, I think that would be really palatable.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Councilmember Christensen, followed by Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I agree with Councilor Nelson on, uh, hesitation on tying it to, uh, bargaining units, uh, uh, their, their increases. Uh, you might want, the council might want to do that then. Understand that?
Yeah.
Um, I, I think-
Because we are volunteers.
Yeah. I, 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 I think it should be, uh, um, up to you to bring to the council when, when you think it's necessary. You're more in touch with what's happening out there as you've provided us with the, uh, other cities and what they're paying. Um, that's why, too, I would hesitate doing that. But I, I think we have a, a really good fire department, and, uh, it's like Councilor Plomman said, it's, it's one of our, uh, major services to the public. This is what our tax money goes to, fire and police protection and, and cleaning the streets. And, uh, yeah, I think it's well deserved.
Councilmember Nelson.
I will make a motion to-
Uh, no, sorry.
Yeah. What am I thinking? I apologize.
Go on the right track.
Councilmember Mosky.
I would concur with everything that everybody's said thus far. I mean, we're talking about non-union employees getting the benefits of, of bargaining that they don't pay into. So fundamentally, I think that's, that is strange, and pulling it would make sense. Um, other concern, and again, I do not, uh, I do not dispute those increases. I think that being sitting for so long without increases is crazy. Um, question though is, this is part of the proposed 2018 operational budget that we have not approved as, as we sit here. If we move on these things, not here, next year, but if we move on these things, uh, to keep track of, of the expenditures that we've already, uh, committed to, will be very important to keep that sidetracked, so we know which ones we've already committed to and those that we did not, since we haven't approved the budget. I've, I've spoken against that in previous meetings, and again, I don't like expending money before we have actually approved the money. But if we keep a track of that list of what we've approved and what we have not as we go forward, I'd appreciate that.
I believe our Finance Director and our City Administrator have that running list, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. I think you have your direction.
Thank you.
And I know it is, in the fire service, it is difficult to keep coming back. I mean, you know, um, but, you know, you brought this to me, I believe, I, was that two months ago? That you brought it to me, and then we asked you to take it back and revise it. So just so in full disclosure to the council, that this was brought up two months ago. And then I asked for some clarification things to put into the document, and then that's why it's coming back now. So, um, just so you guys know that I didn't do that. Uh, when we go through the agenda, sometimes I like to have more information, so I hope there's less questions when it comes to the full council. And so that's, uh, Mr. Holland and I work on those things together. Next is, uh, allocating funds for firefighter pagers. Chief Hanson again.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm looking to, I'm asking to allocate funds from the Verizon cell phone tower that we have on our property, uh, taking that rental money of $15,000 and allocating it into the fire department operating budget to purchase new pagers for our firefighters. Um, the current pagers that we have are approximately five years old. Um, the warranty is coming up on it. They may have not been the, the best purchase. Um, five years ago, they were probably stayed in the yard five years ago. Now we're having, starting to have lots of problems with them. So we, we have been using that warranty very well, um, lately, and I foresee that not stopping. I foresee the warranty going out and spending money repairing pagers. So we're looking at replacing the pagers with a new style pager, um, that does have a five-year warranty. We service here in the state university sending these down to Texas.
I won't make a motion this time. Um, once again, I'm supportive of getting new pagers. I'm just curious about the process with why it's not just put in your regular budget, and then, um, also just why the money should come from that location or from the Verizon towers. I, I'm curious with why we're treating that different than we do other income that comes in from other places. Or are we?
I, I'm not, the reason they can put in the budget is that budget time, um, we weren't having as many problems, and I, and I thought we can maybe make it another year or two. Um, but recently, we've been sending a lot of them, and, um, so that's why it was not proposed in the 2018 budget. The, the money we have, we have money that we get annually from Verizon, um, to rent the property outside the fire station. Um, we have used that money in the past, I think in 2015. Um, we use that money for overhead garage doors at the fire hall, as well as remodeling some fire, or some restrooms. Um, I see it was an, an opportunity, and I was hoping that we could move forward with that.
Council, Councilmember El Dorado, followed by Osmas.
Um, to purchase 40 pagers, how much is that going to cost?
Um, it's just about $18,000 for 40 pagers. So we would take the, the overage and take that out of the operational budget currently that I have in there.
And do I understand that you're hoping that this would be a one-time thing, that you take the rent from Verizon? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
And hopefully we'll, we will not have to buy pagers, at least for another five years after this, because that's how long the warranty is.
And 40 pagers is, why is that, what's, why is that the number?
Because we have 40 firefighters.
Okay. So that you don't have extra ones or anything like?
We actually have had to replace two of them so far this year, so we would have a total of 42 pagers. So we would have two spare.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmas.
Okay, so what did the, what, how was this budgeted in the past, this 15,000? Is that something that went to the general fund? Or, um, Chief Hanson kind of makes it sound like the fire department gets that 15,000. So if you used it for overhead doors in, in 2015, what did you do in 16 and 17 with that 15,000? What did we have planned for that 15,000?
I, I, I believe that that goes into the general fund. Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and I'm just asking it to be allocated towards this. And we did not use it for anything on the fire department in 2016. So I believe that's made available next, for next year's, or for 2018's budget.
Mr. Okens, can you, uh, shed a little light on this? Because my understanding is, is that it would come in as rents under the line item for rents?
Mr. Mayor, that would be correct. If the lease has, uh, been in place for a couple of years, it would be programmed into the general operating budget for 17 in the total overall picture. Would have been budgeted for rents. That's correct.
So if we take the 15,000 from this, I think this is your question, if we take 15,000 from this, where do we have to pull it from? So we have to pull it from another department within the city to fund this, or take it from a, an amount that hasn't yet been spent in totality? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
I'm seeing eyes over here. Um, did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Christensen, followed by Nelson.
Wouldn't it just eventually come from unspent funds? I mean?
It could. Right, right, yeah, yeah. Well, I'm not gonna answer that. Is that right, Mr. Okens?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, you can allocate and amend the budget at any time. So that would, whatever you would choose to do.
Nelson, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, once again, supportive of the pagers. I'm just a little confused because if we've already, we haven't approved the budget for next year, so I'm not quite sure. You're looking to do this now, though, right?
That's correct.
In 2017?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
You could, I mean, we could ask finance to find a place to come up with the 15,000 this year, so we didn't tran- have to transfer rent and those types of things back and forth, could we not?
Sure.
I would think Mr. Okens probably would answer that much more informed than I could.
Here's a problem I've got with it, Chief Hanson. It's that, I understand that it's a revenue generated from the fire station property. But as our budget, uh, was explained to us earlier in our earlier agenda item, we have this big amount of money that comes into the city and it goes into the general fund. If we start pulling it out, you know, then are we gonna have the police department say, "Well, we wrote six traffic tickets last week, so we want you to take those traffic tickets and apply it to a new gun because, um, you know, the police chief wants a new gun." I mean, I think that what I'd like to see is to take this and maybe even by a council motion, say, not tonight, but by a council motion, say that the funds from the Verizon payment are dedicated to a line item on the fire department. And then, because the fire chief has the authority within the budget to move those monies around as he feels with the permission from the city administrator to make those expenditures. So I think what I'm hearing being said is that their support for the pagers is just not the process. So the process maybe is to go to the city administrator and say, "I want to use my budget within line items," and work with the Finance Director and say, "We can find your money." I mean, I'm assuming you're not at the 81% of your budget at this point. And so at that point, we could find it within the parameters of the budget, and then just with the understanding that that is a income that comes into the city, goes into the general fund to be redistributed as the council sees appropriate. If we want to spend this money, as Councilmember Christensen said, we can spend it. Um, Mr. Okens?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, if you refer back to page 28 of the Finance Report, the fire department is a little over 73% of their, uh, budget, which would normally be at 83, as I mentioned in my report. Um, a lot of that is driven by the number of fire calls and the amount budgeted for such. Uh, the council has set the departmental level as a control factor for the, for the budget. And so if the expenditure of the 15,000 still allows them to be under their total, uh, that could be done by administrator, uh, authority, according to the purchasing and budgeting policy the council has adopted. So you could go ahead and prove that. And if a budget amendment is needed, as we'll be discussing next month, we can address it at that time.
Would it be fair to say that the confusing part on this is that, um, you identified a revenue source of this 15,000 for the tower rent? And so you asked, if, forget the tower rent, okay? Forget that. If you, basically, you're just asking for $18,000 to buy some pagers that you weren't able to budget for in 2017?
And you're asking for a budget amendment.
Okay. Just making sure I understood it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you have your direction, so I would anticipate that we'd see something that, a revised card for the next meeting. Okay, thank you. Um, nothing else before the, uh, council, and we will adjourn until our next meeting.